Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Melissa Williams and I serve as the President of the Washington County Board of Education. I would like to welcome the members of the Board of Education, our Board Student Representative, the Superintendent, the Superintendent's staff, and the community to the Board of Education's public work session on the Superintendent's recommended draft general fund operating budget for fiscal year 2022. Everyone is participating in this meeting utilizing a telephone or an electronic device. It has always been the practice of the Board of Education to meet in person and to invite members of the public to the Board's meetings. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, certain legal directives, and the need to safeguard the health of the community, it is necessary to participate in this public meeting by phone or an electronic device. Today's public work session will be recorded and the public may access the public meeting now on Channel 99, Facebook, and on the WCPS website. The Board of Education encourages the public to submit their comments in writing to BOE@WCPS.k12.md.us and the information will then be distributed to Board members and the Superintendent. At this time, I'll call to order the public work session of the Washington County Board of Education. No formal action is to be taken at a Board of Education work session, but I will be asking all Board members to identify themselves in alphabetical order so that we may determine if we have a quorum of members present. So, let's begin.
Peter Bickford is here.
Daryl Evans is here.
Mike Gessford's here.
Linda Murray's here.
Dan Stalfer is here.
Melissa Williams is here. Okay, Dr. Zentmeyer is apparently having trouble unmuting, but I can confirm that she is indeed present. So we have all members and we have our student representative present, so we do have a quorum. Okay, at this time, I want to remind you that no votes or formal action will be taken during this work session. The purpose of today's work session is to receive information and to discuss and ask questions about the information presented. Before I turn things over to Dr. Michael and his staff, I'd like to call your attention, members, to the budget calendar and ask if you have any questions about the calendar. You'll notice that in February, we have a second work session. So please make that notation on your calendar. So if you have, yeah, on your calendar or in your datebook. So if you have no questions about the calendar for the budget cycle, then we'll turn things over to the Superintendent, Dr. Michael.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our work session on the FY22 budget. Interesting budget to put together, just a lot of uncertainty, like everything else with COVID at this point. Just not exactly sure what to do even here from a draft standpoint, but the staff has worked very hard to pull together what we believe is the starting point for the budgeting process with the Superintendent's draft budgets. And I'm just going to jump right in. We're going to start with sharing revenue expectations. I'm not sure if the PowerPoint's up there yet. Here it comes. We had a little trouble with animation, so I think what we're going to see is just slide by slide. So state revenues, obviously, we've had a decrease in enrollment from K to 12. Our K to 12 enrollment is what we call the money number as far as enrollment goes. We're down 723 students. Now, if we were a school system that had declining enrollment and expected that, I wouldn't be, you know, I would say it wouldn't be unanticipated, but it is unanticipated with COVID because we expected to be relatively flat or even up slightly in our K to 12 enrollment. So being down 723 students could have a negative impact on our budget. Our pre-K program is down as well for this year. So a lot of parents chose to keep their four-year-olds at home or put them in other programs or private daycares because of not having students in school, and we're down 331 students there. So both of those have significant impact to our state income. So the real question becomes, will the state hold us harmless for being down K to 12 and hold us harmless for being down in pre-K? We don't know the answers to those questions. We know across the state that everyone is asking those questions. The pre-K is significant to Washington County because of our rapid growth in pre-K. I mean, we're looking at almost $5,000 a student, so that's a significant amount of money. Even if they hold a K to 12 harmless, it would be a significant hit if they don't hold us harmless in pre-K. We just simply don't know. So at this point, that's an unknown. So to look further into state revenue, other pieces that really drive a lot of our funding from the state is obviously our farm rate under our comp ed money. We are down slightly in farm rate, not because we necessarily have a lower farm rate as far as our children are concerned out there, but this year because the federal government is allowing all students to eat for free, regardless of your income, it was much more challenging to try to get children to and parents to submit farm applications. We're hoping that was true across the state and that, you know, that all will kind of equal out as the state does their formula because everything is relevant. If all the counties are down in enrollment, we'll have less of an impact if they don't hold us harmless. If all the counties are down with farm rate, we'll have less of an impact if they don't hold us harmless. So really, all these things are interdependent and depends on what happens across the state. So comp ed is another one of those things that is unclear at this point. Also, we look at the Consumer Price Index. We've estimated for the purposes of this budget of about a 1% increase to overall state funding for the budget. We've seen the governor in the past actually make it more than the Consumer Price Index, and certainly he has the power to keep it exactly at the Consumer Price Index. So we've kind of split the difference on that. We think the CPI right now is about .7, .8 of 1% or of a percent, so just slightly under 1%. So we've estimated state revenues overall to increase 1%, and that's what helped drives the rest of our foundation formula across the board, our transportation formula, special ed formula, and the comp ed money. The other big source of money for us beyond the state revenue is the local revenue, and we really have those same unknowns. The county can meet maintenance of effort, the same amount of money per student that they spent last year, by giving us significantly less money. It could be, you know, as much as 3.4 million less money than they gave us last year, and they would still meet maintenance of effort by paying for 723 less students. Locally, the state is not, or excuse me, locally, the county is not involved in pre-K funding, so we receive no money from them for pre-K programs at this time. We're hoping that if the state makes the decision to hold us harmless, that they'll actually mandate that across the state to counties. We've heard rumor of that. We don't know if that will be true. So another unknown for us is what will happen with our decreased enrollment here locally? Will we have the reduction? Again, the county can meet maintenance of effort by giving a significantly less money than they gave last year. As we look on to the low effort adjustments, we do anticipate that again, Washington County will be identified as needing to make a low effort adjustment. So the purposes of this budget, we've included approximately a 2.5% increase based on what's happening across the state. We think the county will be required to increase their maintenance of effort by 2.5%, but we don't know that for certain right now. That's an unknown. We normally would know this about this time or maybe into next week. It generally happens before the winter break. I'm not aware that we've received anything unless it came today. So it's a little bit of another unknown, but for the purposes of this budget, we've kept that in there. So in summary of some of the assumptions we've made as we created this draft budget, we're assuming, and these are all big assumptions, we're assuming the state will hold us harmless for our K to 12 enrollment drop of 723 students. We're holding, we're counting on the state holding us harmless for our pre-K enrollment drop of 331 students. We're counting on the county to hold us harmless for the K to 12 decrease of 723 students. We're counting on comp ed to go up at least 1%. The Consumer Price Index, 1%, and we're counting on the county to be identified to adjust their maintenance of effort by the low effort adjustment of 2.5% for the purposes of this budget. So as we look at incremental revenue, we're hoping that with all those assumptions, the state holding us harmless for those enrollments, that and having that increase in CPI and all these other assumptions, that we'd receive approximately $1.833 million in state funding. And then locally, again, assuming the county would hold us harmless for the enrollment decline is identified for the low effort adjustment and supports this budget with additional requests, we're looking for $4.39 million of increased funding locally from the county commissioners. We also have to account for a little over a quarter of a million dollars in decrease in revenue. This is primarily from the interest rates that have decreased on our savings. The Board has already seen that in quarterly adjustments. We need to account for that in next year, so we're anticipating that those interest rates will remain very low, so the income from that has to be accounted for in this budget. So as we look at what we're going to review next, our expenditures, overall, our expenditures are up 2%. Our revenue assumptions are up 2%. So we're going to look at the 2021 alignments. Those are things that have occurred in this year's budget that we have to account for. We're going to look at grant adjustments. These are some grants that have ended or needed some adjustments, and we need to account for them in the general fund. We do have a number of mandatory increases, some things that are automatically going up that we have no control over. I have placed in the budget money for compensation and benefits, and also we have budget adjustments where again, staff has gone line by line through the budget and looked for savings, transfers, as well as the adjustments to changes of salaries. So as we look on ahead, we'll begin with the 2021 alignments partway through this year. We hired a full-time psychologist. We paid for half of that from the general fund, half of that from MA billing, Medicare billing, and we have to adjust for that in this year's budget. In the movement of Sharpsburg, the increased square footage of Sharpsburg, Barbara Ingram, as you recall, last year, we had three custodians in the budget to account for that additional square footage. Unfortunately, by the time we balanced the budget last year, all of those needed to be cut out. We did transfer part of a position from South to Sharpsburg. In doing so, we needed to pick up a couple hours, I think it was two hours of a custodian, and we've already done that in this year's budget, so we'll need to account for that. The last item listed there is Title I. We're actually able to include in Title I an assistant principal, so we're transferring an assistant principal out of the general fund budget into the Title I budget, but we're also, the feds are looking for us to make sure in our Title I funding that we have experienced teachers. So we're reflecting in Title I funding this year, some of our more experienced teachers in Title I schools, and to do that, we need to make the adjustment of lower cost entry level teaching positions, intervention teacher, and transfer those back and forth between Title I and the general fund. So net new positions as far as the Title I and that list of teachers at the bottom, the assistant principals, those are no new net positions. It's just who's paying for what out of Title I and out of the general fund, but all those positions exist this year. And again, the custodian is a couple-hour adjustment that we've had to make, and the halftime psychologist, and all of that is done with $57,000. So pretty minor adjustment to a $300 million budget at this point. I do want to draw the Board's attention to up at the top right-hand corner, I should have done this earlier, you'll see Section 2A and B. You have a four-page summary document of the larger document. You can follow all of these changes under those sections. So if you open that four-page document, you'll see a Section 2 identified, you'll see A and B identified, and you'll see these changes reflected on that document. We'll come back to questions, or certainly I'd be glad to answer questions as we go, but maybe I'll just finish through the PowerPoint and then we can open it up to questions afterwards. The next page is really our grant adjustments. In addition to the Title I adjustments that we needed to make, we have our literacy grant that we were hoping was going to be renewed at the federal level for five more years. So you recall Laura Hanks was a big part, Dr. Hanks is a big part in securing this grant. It's really helped out with a number of positions and a whole backbone of our reading launch here over the last four years. Unfortunately, that grant was not renewed at the federal level, and we need to absorb those positions in the budget or lose very, very vital resources that we need to maintain. So while these are going to reflect net new positions to the general fund budget, much like the previous page, these are not a reflection of new positions as far as additional supports for students. This is maintaining current supports for students. So we have our two literacy achievement coordinators in this position, in this grant adjustment. These are the driving force behind our elementary and secondary reading interventions. The one EL teacher is the teacher at the Welcome Center over Pangborn. It's been a huge success. We've been able to pay for it out of the grant. This teacher meets and greets our EL populations, they come into the system, helps them get set up, help them get enrolled in school, help them receive the services that they need. So we felt that was a vital piece of this grant, and we picked that up. We have district reading teachers across the system that are kind of model teachers by grade level that do a great deal of professional development. There's a small stipend that goes with that. We felt that was important to continue and picked that up in the general fund. And then the only instructional materials that we picked up from the grant were the money needed for our pre-K libraries, this is the 50 books that each of our pre-K students get when they first enroll with us in Washington County Public Schools. So the grant runs almost $700,000 a year. We did not pull ever the whole grant into the general fund, so we actually pulled in over $442,000 into the general fund, and we're going to let the rest of the grant funding, unfortunately, is not available to supply a lot more professional development and instructional materials. We just, I just didn't see the means in our budget, the income in our budget to pull the whole grant into the general fund, but I felt these were the most important pieces for us to maintain, particularly with the learning gap that we anticipate when all the students return and we need to address. We wanted to make sure we kept this vital resource. Our next section is the mandatory increases. These are things that are beyond our control. So we have software and service contracts. Many of them have a 2% or 3% escalator in them, already built into the four- or five-year agreements on the front end. Phone service, fiber optic services have continued to go up, particularly as we've needed increased bandwidth. So this area is really beyond our control, and we have to pick up about $275,000. You can find that under Section 4 of the four-page document. We look on to Section 5, compensation and benefits. In this, I've included the increase for minimum wage. So minimum wage in January gets up 75 cents. We've accounted that for that in the FY21 budget. I'll need staff to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in FY22, it goes up another 75 cents, and I think the following year it goes up the balance to get the $15. So we need to, that's a federal requirement or state requirement that we had to pick up. Pension costs this year, I think, are about $390,000 based on previous raises. It takes a year or so for those pension costs to catch up with us. So again, in order to maintain our pension position, we had to pick that up, and then created a salary resource pool that would provide a very, very modest raise. So this isn't what I'd really love to give our staff, particularly after the challenges of this year and the minimum raise that we were able to give, and they were still working through some details with one of the bargaining groups, but from what I can see, very minimum wage this last year, excuse me, minimum wage, not to be confused with minimum wage, minimum adjustments to salaries that really staff deserves far greater than what they received this past year based on all the work that they've done. I'd love to be able to put a bigger number in, but this is what I believe we potentially could afford. We go to the last section, Section 6. We have done, as we always have done, gone through line by line, made a lot of adjustments, a lot of transfers, not as many reductions as we've had in the past. A large part of this 1.3 million is turnover credit. The Board members that have been here, we recall, turnover credit is really the delta of hiring new staff or more senior staff that are retiring, and we make an estimated guess, or I say we do, Eric Sisler makes an educated guess at what the turnover credit is, and that we actually have to achieve that through attrition and retirements and things like that throughout the year. So that adjustment for next year, we're predicting to be about $1.3 million. So the 2% increase in revenue and the 2% increase in expenditures is just shy of $6 million. So on a $300 million budget, roughly, you know, 1% is 3 million, 2% is 6 million. So our budget reflects a 2% increase in income and 2% increase in expenses. So normally, I wouldn't include a slide like this, but I think it's important that the Board's aware of what's not in this budget. So we're already looking at $6 million. We're already looking at some big assumptions, and we need all the stars to align to receive the money that would take to pay for this budget. But what's not in this budget, and unfortunately, our things aren't animated here, but you know, there's first two lines, the pandemic academic recovery plan. So what I'm going to talk a little bit more about in the business meeting, also in January, we're forming this committee that's going to be looking at how do we continue to adjust where we are right now in our current situation with the pandemic? How do we recover from the pandemic? How do we help close those learning gaps? How do we accelerate learning? How do we get back on track and back to normal? There are no new programs, there's no new money for PD, there's no new money for before school, after school, summer school. There is nothing in this budget that addresses the academic recovery program that we need. If the pandemic continues and there's a need for a substantial amount of PPE materials for next year, there are $0 of increased PPE materials in this budget. As the Board's aware, we made budget adjustments to pay for more than a million dollars worth of PPE at this point, as well as our gears and cares money has helped pay for some of that. Traditionally, we've included three to five contingency positions. You know, we often just, you know, we get a lot of surprises. Enrollment low here, it spikes over there, it moves, probably a year that we definitely need contingency positions might be this year. We don't know how students are going to return. Will 723 return? Will 523 return? Will 1,023 return? And/or get added to our numbers? Very difficult to determine for next year. But this budget includes zero contingency positions. Again, normally, we include three to five contingency positions. It doesn't include anything for increase in EL services for our English/English learners. Those needs have increased. We know that we might have EL students that aren't even involved with us for this year that will pick up next year, and obviously, their learning gaps will need to be addressed. The Board has been dedicated to continuing to expand our counselor and social worker roles in Washington County. We have no new positions for that. There are a great many financial reporting requirements coming with Kirwin and Gatsby and some other things, and, you know, I wanted to look at the potential of adding another entry-level accountant position. This budget does not afford that at this point. Clerical staff at the school level is going to have increased responsibilities, and we have a couple of schools that I believe are understaffed with clerical staff based on their enrollment growth, but this budget does not include anything to address that. Our maintenance, I believe, is going to continue to increase our maintenance costs as far as repairs and things like that, based on not building any schools for at least the next 10 years, based on our CIP. We'll have painting and roof and boiler and chiller and envelope of the building and floors and carpet and all those types of things to address if we're going to keep our buildings in nice shape, and there's no additional money to address those things. And actually, a good thing to bring to your attention is the last one. We don't have a premium increase in this budget. Our healthcare fund, similar to other entities that I'm hearing about, is actually in very good shape, I think largely because people haven't been going to the doctor, people have been using telehealth a little bit more. A lot of elective surgeries and procedures are not happening right now. So our healthcare fund is in very solid shape, and we were going to predict zero increase in our healthcare insurance fund. That saves our employees, sharing a burden in that increase. It also helps the Board operating budget in that we don't have to increase our share, which is, you know, 80, 85% of the increase. So that's actually a good thing not to have in this budget. As I kind of conclude my opening comments here, I do want to bring to the Board's attention that I've made a lot of assumptions in this draft budget, and we need to look at the, almost the worst-case scenario or the worst of this, what if the state doesn't hold us harmless? That means that our funding per student will be down 723 students. So that could have us at a starting point of a negative number from the current budget. If the state doesn't hold us harmless for those 331 pre-K students, that could be a negative number of more than $1,000, $1.6 million. If our local government doesn't hold us harmless, again, that could be, you know, 3.4, $3.5 million decrease on top of the amount of money we've asked to have increased. The comp ed money, we get hit harder with farm rate with our slight decline if other counties went up. We could experience a decrease in comp ed money or a decrease for what we're assuming. Consumer price index of the governor only does .7, .8 instead of the 1% that we projected. That would result in a decrease in this budget, and if the county is not identified or the state does not hold counties accountable for low effort adjustments, that would be a significant increase in this budget. So I've kind of given you a very optimistic revenue sourcing as I've crafted this budget. Net-net new to the county as far as new positions, new resources, things we'll be able to work for, even though there's increases in this budget, net new as far as what's going to impact the classroom, what's available to us, in my opinion, is zero because positions are just transferring from grants. The increases are things that are mandatory and are really paying for the same services that already exist. So this is an absolute bare bones budget in that there is just nothing new, even though it's a reflection of increases. There's nothing new to Washington County, to Washington County students and teachers and to our system to support learning at this point in this budget. So with that, I'd be glad to entertain any questions. I know I saw David Brandonberg's on, Jeff Prue's on, senior staff's on, Eric's probably here somewhere, so they're really the people that can help answer questions as we move forward. So I don't know if we need to go back to any slides or whether we want to go back to the gallery view here, what we like to do. This is Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. It would be helpful, I think, if we go back to the gallery view and call up the slides if they're required.
Okay.
And at this time, I'd like to call my colleagues' attention to the icon, which is the raised hand at the top of your screen. Does everyone see that? If we could use that. I have my participant window open, so if you click on that, if you have So if you click on that, if you have a question or a comment that you would like to make, we can start with whose ever hand goes first. Questions or comments? Mr. Bickford.
I can't believe I beat Stan to the punch. He's probably waiting for everybody to ask questions, then he'll have a lot of questions. I sort of drilled in on the pandemic recovery program since we know that's really going to be a budget reality. Any idea of what, when would we know the cost of that? And that seems like something that would be logical to ask for support from the county, especially if they have any COVID funding. Do we have any clue if they've spent all of their COVID restricted funding or not?
I know, I know that I've seen some articles in the papers, so I'm not sure if they're completely spent or ever spent. There was some information I saw on Conduit Street today about the stimulus package from the federal government. I mean, if that's passing, there's apparently more money in there for education. I have no idea what the restrictions would be. I hope that is for academic recovery or what strings would be on it, what timeline would be on it. I think I don't want to jump ahead of the committee's work, but I would anticipate we're going to need as much one-on-one time as we can with students, as much extended year as we can with students. So I would anticipate a longer summer school or a more inclusive summer school, more before school, after school, Saturday school, more pullouts, certainly if we had the resources to do more reading and math interventions in particular, would be the kind of expenses I would anticipate would come out of the committee. But I really don't, again, I don't want to jump ahead of that. Our challenge really is going to be, will students participate? Will they participate before, after school? Will they participate in summer school in a greater way? Because we invite thousands of children to summer school and we want to get a portion of them to show up. We're really going to have to work together as a community, including parents, to ensure that their children have everything that they need, assuming we can provide those resources. So I would say we'll see things unfold from the committee, you know, weekly in the short term. And obviously over a period of a couple of months, as we look into getting back into stage five, whatever. I'm hoping we're certainly there by summer, but who knows? And certainly by September, hopefully, we're there. But we're going to, my belief, and I'll share a little bit about this tonight or in January, what we're going to recover and the biggest impact of recovery is going to come quickly for students. What we don't do in the first three or four months, while a lot of people are saying it'll take years to recover, that's correct. But in the meantime, I feel like our students are losing more while we're waiting for them to recover what they lost from this year. So I really want to hit it hard, hit it up front, really try to accelerate their growth, their learning. I mean, the biggest thing that I see it's going to mean time, and time generally means money.
Got it, thank you. My only comment would be, I know that this is an issue that every school district will be dealing with, which probably will bode well for us when it comes to additional support, hopefully additional funding support from outside sources. Because I imagine it's going to be a nationwide problem that needs to be tackled. So I'm free to, you can go on to other questions, President Williams.
Mr. Gessford, I saw your hand next.
Oh, yeah, thank, just looking at the state revenue uncertainties with the free and reduced meals and farm money. I know every year we do have, we go through this. And one of my questions would be this time is, because people are not filling out those forms that we require to get that money, are we doing anything like with our staff making phone calls and helping people through that process? Because I know most people just don't pick up the phone or don't just fill them out because they don't know how. So if we're helping them by filling the form out over the phone, does that benefit us to do something like that? Why we are struggling with maybe this money here that we could be using?
Right, I mean, absolutely. So the food service team as well, school teams did what they've done in the past, where they've contacted people that were on free reduced meals last year, encouraged them to complete the application and submit it. So we've had students enrolled. We've offered applications that we've done. We may have a real good process for trying to get every possible student that's on free and reduced lunch. Where we pick up generally kind of the last people to complete that is thirty days into the school year. Your eligibility from last year runs out. And at that point, all of a sudden, your meals stop. And then that generally prompts you to go ahead and complete the paperwork. We didn't have that this year because everybody's receiving a free breakfast, lunch, in some cases supper during various parts of the year. And I think because that never stopped for those people that procrastinate or for whatever reason don't fill it out, as often as we called them, offered help, assistance, send them additional paperwork, showed them how to enroll online, all of those things. You know, as long as their child's being fed, they've just got other things they're doing instead of completing that. But I'm sure the team, I know the team has worked very, very hard to re-enroll all those students that had paperwork from last year. Direct certification and things like that was automatic. So that is how we're getting a great deal of credit for students that have received service. Other agencies, we automatically, they're automatically enrolled in the free reduced meal program. But that's something, Mr. Gessford, the team has worked very hard and continues to work hard to try to get kids enrolled. But the free meal for all has kind of hurt down a little bit. It's a good thing, but it also has crippled us in trying to get those last couple of applications in.
All right, thank you.
And Dr. Michael, Mrs. Williams, if I may, this is Jeff Prue. An additional thought I have to Mr. Gessford's question is also that the application and how it's filled out is regulated by the federal government. So the ability to take an application by phone really is not there. The application has to be formally signed either in ink or digitally through an electronic format by the parent.
But Mr. Prue, our team has done all the things they traditionally do. It's just that lack of in-person and lack of requirement to have it has kind of hurt us for probably the last couple of percent that we could have gotten.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Stelfer, I did see your hand, but it's lower. Did you want to go? Did you want to unmute and?
Kevin had his hand up before I did, I believe.
Oh, I saw yours and I saw yours after Mr. Gessford, but we'll go to Kevin and come back to you.
Okay.
Kevin?
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Williams. So I have a question. I'm looking at the budget right now. I'm trying to see where is there a lot of funding for students extracurriculars? Like if they are participating in like a team outside or different clubs? Is there funding in the budget for that?
So in the forty-one page document, I can't give you chapter and verse. I'm sure one of the team members will be able to point you right to the page. We do still have our athletic funding in there available. We're still paying for coaches. We're still paying for referees. There's money in there for stipends for various club advisors. So all that money is still in the budget. There's money in there for per pupil allotment to support extracurricular activities that we give to schools directly. So at this point, we did not look at reducing any of those sources of funding. So that if that funding is at the same levels in there for this year. Our challenge could become, and not specific to that, but our challenge could become, what if there's not six million of net new money to support this budget or additional things that the board wants to do or things the board wants to take away? We'd have to determine what needs to be cut in order to fund this budget or the board's budget at that point. But right now, Mr. Bakun, those items are still in the budget as they were in the past. I don't know, David or Eric or Jeff, I don't know if you can point them in the forty-one page document. I know it's on four or five different lines, I think.
Pages seven through nine. Is where the classroom instructional programs and the stipends you mentioned are part of the salaries and wages and a lot of the other things are in other charges.
Okay, so in the forty-one page, Dr. Mr. Bakun, we can point you to some specific items there if you want more information.
Okay, Mr. Stelfer?
Yes, thank you, President Williams. As I perused this document preparation for this work session, I was very intrigued by the page that what's not in the budget. So I've got a few questions about that. I don't want to put anybody on the spot here. But any idea as what resources and money amounts we would need for pandemic academic recovery?
Well, I think, because Victor had asked a similar question, but, you know, I think, again, it's going to depend on what we can, what we can get students to involve themselves in beyond the normal school day. The normal school day we have paid for. So if it's time, it's time for teachers or, you know, programs or things like that before, after school, Saturday school, expanded summer school, and that may go into next year extensively. But if students won't participate or if I can't get staff to participate, you know, all the money doesn't matter. And that could be an issue even with the federal money that they've sometimes given us. Sometimes they're giving them overwhelming amounts that we haven't been able to spend at all. I think we would continue to look at various interventions. And there's everybody under the sun is trying to sell something that is the quick fix for closing achievement gaps. But we're looking at those resources carefully. So I think it'll be instructional materials. I think professional development will be important. Our tier one instruction, our initial instruction with children, when everyone comes back, needs to be better than ever before. Recognizing the learning gaps that children have, how do I individualize instruction for them while I have them in the classroom? Take advantage of that opportunity. Maybe it's a schedule change that reflects some additional academic support for some secondary students. A lot of the costs that I still believe is going to come in summer school, before, after school costs. And again, will children, will the children that need to stay, stay available? Will provide transportation? That might be another significant cost. Because a lot of our children that can't stay, even though we can provide them to supper, they're challenged by transportation, especially if they live outside of the downtown area. So transportation costs could be a significant cost as well, even for summer school or again, before, after school support or even Saturday school support. It's not a punishment if we gave extra time to students. It's an absolute necessity. And I think a lot of people are thinking about our students that are failing. I would probably argue we're going to have a significant percentage of our students that need additional support to close up their academic gap, not because of anything they did right or wrong, just simply, you know, there just wasn't enough time to cover all the material and teach all the material that was available to maybe even our most gifted child as well as children that are struggling.
Another thing, contingency teaching positions, we always have three or four or five, I think, in the budget. So if, if next September, we find a significant portion of these seven hundred and twenty-three students that were down returned and we don't have that in the budget, any anticipation as to how we might handle that situation if we find out we would really need them?
No, what we've done in the past, and we haven't done it very often because it's not very, it's not very well received, is that the last minute, we move staffing. It works, again, it's not well received, but it works fairly well in elementary. So we had three third grade teachers. We only need two, but I need somebody to teach fourth grade at another school. You realize that three or four days into the school year, after you really kind of get enrollment settled down. And unfortunately, we go, we tap the person that has the least seniority and say, I'm sorry, but we're going to transfer you to another school where they have a greater need. We've done that before. Like I say, it's not a very pleasant thing, but we also can't afford to run classes of, you know, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen kids and have another school running classes of twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty children. The contingency positions have always given us a little flexibility to have three to five positions to go to before we'd have to go to an extreme, like moving someone who's already started teaching and then they might even have to change grade levels. So that flexibility is not available in this budget. It really needs to be, but I, I just can't see the income to pay for that right now unless there's some type of federal dollars. My concern about the federal dollars, if there is some type of windfall from federal money, it'll be one-time money. And then we'll have to think about how we work with that as one-time money. When you're hiring staffing with one-time money, when's it run out? It's very similar to grants. You know, how do you sustain those things, that kind of thing?
Now I'll just make one more comment and then I'll go on to someone else. I was glad to see that there was no premium increase for health insurance because I think that's one of the great recruiting and retention tools that we have in this county is our healthcare system. I'm retired and I'm on Medicare, but I know, you know, it's great backup insurance too.
It's, we do have a good, excuse me, a good medical plan. And it is a good retention tool. When people describe that, even staff will say it's a good plan. We're in really good shape right now. But again, I've noticed, I think the county had like a windfall, not a windfall, but a reduction of what they thought was going to be cost. But I think, again, it's a lot of the selective surgery. People aren't going to the doctor. They're afraid to get something. Telework, telehealth is actually saving a lot of money. We promoted that last year. We had a couple MOUs with the various bargaining groups over the last two or three years. That savings is really showing up right now. And I'm hoping we could go maybe another year without an increase. But we're going to see a pretty significant increase in the healthcare balance. And, you know, we'll just have to think about, is there an opportunity there to reduce costs in the future or be able to hold on here for maybe a couple of years without an increase in costs?
Mrs. Murray?
Yeah, Boyd, I know back when I was working and I'm sure since I've left, they had programs for students after school. The kids would get a snack and then they'd do a work on math and reading. And then they'd have buses to take them home or parents would pick them up. Is that a model that we could use or a guide that we could use to figure out what programs we might be able to do and the cost of those programs? So that perhaps if someone from the state, federal or even county level would ask us what we need?
Right, I mean, absolutely. That's, again, I just see time with students being the critical factor. We're realizing right now, acuteness work is what many of the students that are failing don't complete. So the teacher teaches their lesson and they leave work for the students to do between lessons. And many of the students don't complete that work. And that's often causing them to fail. But I'm hoping that's also additional learning that's occurring. So that's part of that gap that we need to close up, not completing paperwork, but that learning gap that we need to close up. Again, I just see it around additional time is going to be a huge part of it. Excuse me. So yes, that model is something I would see, Mrs. Murray, expanded across the entire county. We do that a lot in our Title I schools and a little less so in some other schools. I see evening high school, maybe virtual. So we'll probably take advantage of virtual one-on-one. So maybe I can't get the child to see after school, but they would join a teacher from six to six-thirty for a one-on-one lesson. I was in six schools today. Pretty much spent my whole day in school, I guess from eight to one, I was out in the schools. And a lot of our IAs are doing a great job working one-on-one with students. So I would see that continuing, not only from a teacher standpoint, but even an IA could help with that. We could hire retired educators if they'd be willing to participate that way, tutors and things like that. But yes, it's just that access to the student. So maybe the virtual world will help us with transportation. We won't have children see after. The separate program we can make available to children to see after school. And we do have, I believe we can expand that across the entire system right now.
Thank you.
Dr. Michael, I have a question and I think Mr. Brandonberg might be the person to answer it. I'm looking at page thirty-three of forty-one, which is the elected board member services.
Yes.
And I'm looking at FY eighteen through FY twenty-two, which lists the total amount for salaries and wages for board members. And I'm seeing from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two, an increase of twenty thousand, three hundred dollars. So my question is, is this twenty thousand plus dollars the amount to get all seven board members on the same salary, given the salary study increase that was recommended in two thousand and sixteen? Or is this an additional twenty thousand to reflect the proposed current salary study commission's increase?
This is to adjust the
This, this is to adjust the, the members who were elected or who, who are elected, I believe. Eric, do you, do you have the particulars of that, I believe?
It's to get everyone who was just recently elected up to the salaries that were presented new in 2016. So now everybody, this gets everybody to the same scape for salaries that were from four years ago.
Okay, so that would be-
The current proposal won't take place until the next election.
Okay, so that would be the incumbents who were reelected and the two new members, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so given what the salary commission recommended, do we have numbers to know what that increase would be? Going forward?
I don't know that we looked specifically at that because that would not reflect in FY 22. I guess they could reflect in FY 20 23?
23.
Yeah. Be a part of the first payment.
It would, it would be half, half in 23 and then the full year effect on 24.
Okay.
So we're looking at even, you know, assuming the county commissioners, I don't know if they voted today to support the school board raise or whether that's a topic for us to discuss today or you discussed today. But we wouldn't have any idea about that budgeting because that is not, it's not reflected in this budget because it wouldn't need to be reflected in this budget. It is still, still a budget cycle away. Or I guess a budget and a half cycle away.
We could, we could calculate it just as an informational purpose, but.
That would be appreciated.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Mr. Bakum? Is your hand up again?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Williams. So I have a question of here, I see during like multiple pages and like during like each category, there is tuition to other Maryland local education agencies. Can you explain what that's for since I'm not fully, I just can't get on that topic?
Probably, Mr. Bakum, you're probably looking at some special ed pages where we pay tuition for various schools that some special ed students attend for services that are beyond what Washington County can offer. It also could be tuition income or tuition that we pay for students that are outside of our district that attend to other schools based on county lines. Some things like that. Let me defer to Eric or David for maybe a little clarifying comment.
The special ed portion is on page 17 and the regular ed portion is on page nine. And it is the these people who are living in out of county, out of county living arrangements. Students living in out of county living arrangements that are, are based in our counties, so we are responsible for paying for them. But they're going to school in another county, so we have to pay them the local share. They get to count those students in their enrollment for state purposes. We pay the local share and we pay our rate and the state makes up the difference between our rate and that county's local rate.
So does that, does that county still get state funding for that student or does that go back to us?
No, they get that. They get the state funding for that student.
And we also have to pay for tuition too on top of that?
That's, we call it tuition, but it's, it's, it's just the local share. It's not, it's not anything in addition to the local share and that, and that's calculated by the state based on everyone's budget numbers. It's, it's, the, the programs referred to is the out of county living arrangements.
For example, for example, correct me David if I'm wrong, but it could be like a, a foster student who is from Washington County, but perhaps is placed in a, in a living arrangement in a neighboring county or something like that.
That's right.
So we basically have shifted the burden to another county and the state requires us to pay for that.
All right. And then there's a revenue line on page one of 41 where we have, on, right way down at the bottom of the page, under other resources, transfers in Maryland LEAs. And that's what we receive for those kind of placements that are in our county for students who are sourced from other counties.
So we receive about $220,000 from other counties that have the similar situation. So we're paying it out and receiving it as well.
Yes. And then the state, there's a small amount up there under state revenue under the out of county and schools near county line. That's another program where there's just for convenience, we, student attends in another county because they're near a county line near that county school, another county school. And that's 19,320 that we have budgeted for that. So that's, that represents what the state makes up the difference between maybe a lower per pupil county and what our local rate is.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Four places in the budget.
Mr. Gassford, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you. Just got a question here. On page three of 41, line 23, on the far right, there's a number that says 23. That line is a turnover credit. Could you tell me what, if we have any actual turnover credits for this year and explain the $100,000? That's budgeted?
Yes, we, we budget turnover credit throughout the budget. I think we budget about 3.1 million throughout the budget. The biggest chunk of it is in classroom instructional salaries on page eight or nine. What we plan or budget to have, we mentioned this earlier in the presentation where people, the main place we pick up turnover credit, well, it's really two places. The first being where we have people who retire and the person that replaces that position comes in at a lower salary. So for example, if you look at the page three, if you look at elementary assistant principals, pit line six. Or let me, maybe a better example would be like line three where the high school, we're going down $2,700. That's all just due to turnover credit. So we would add up all the, the various lines would go against that 100,000. So anything on that page, page three and on page five, they're both in mid-level administration. They could go against 100,000 that's listed on page three. Okay.
Ms. Williams, I see Mr. Bickford's hand.
Yes, Mr. Bickford.
The employee benefit program, it's page four, the summary of changes. Could you just go through those since it's a pretty significant number of how we come, how we came to over 1.1 million in savings, correct?
Where are you?
Start.
Page, it's line 50, the employee benefit program for the, on page four of four.
And you're on the summary.
Fourth page.
Summary, I apologize, yes.
So so in line 50, the adjustment of 787,000, that's, that's, that's the adjustment we were just talking about with turnover credit. So that's, if we go through every line of the budget for salaries and adjust to the current people, we pick up 787,000. That would go against the budgeted of turnover credit of 3.1 million and the remainder would have to be covered through vacancies. But then the next adjustment there, the 42,000 is just the FICAN workers comp against the 787,000. And then the $500,000 medical insurance adjustment is basically based on two things. We've had some adjustments there the last couple of years. We're seeing people select lower cost tiers or plans for their family or and we're also basically, we're kind of budgeting a turnover credit in medical insurance. Due to vacancies, we're having savings in med, in medical insurance. And then the last thing shown there, the $220,000 increase is just bringing in line the sick leave incentive payouts from line nine of page 32 closer to what we actually experienced in the last year.
So the $3 million in turnover credit and the, and the savings in the health insurance is achieved two ways. It's achieved by, by the, the new positions being perhaps at lower pay because they've got less experience or something. And then it's also achieved by the fact that there are vacancies and it takes some time during the hiring process and someone leaves to replace that position. So you have, you have savings during that time in health insurance as well as salaries.
Got it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Other questions?
Mr. Bakum?
Yes, thank you, President Williams. On page six, line 13 of the budget, there's PSAT fees. Since PSATs were not, they were not done with the school system this year due to buildings being closed. Did, did the payment paid to the college board come back to us or was, was this still deducted?
That would be the kind of thing that we would use the budget adjustment out of. So when we have a savings like that, that's where we would transfer money to support our PPE purchases and things. So we did not pay college board to my knowledge for PSATs that we obviously didn't give. But those, those are the places that for like this year in particular, we're not running our buses every day, so we're saving on diesel fuel. Various things like that, we pick up savings, but those are the types of things that help us pay for overages and things like PPE materials and things like that. That's a good point, Mr. Bakum, but those obviously will be back on track, we hope, next October for the PSAT. And we want to make sure we maintain that in there.
And also, if you go up to line 11, it says AP exams and supplies. Does that also include IB exams? And or ACT exams or where would that be located?
IB, I believe is also in the AP exam line, David and Eric.
I believe so. The membership is back under targeted programs. But I believe the, the exams would be in here. Yes, the AP line.
And there was no expected increase in those costs?
I think we go with historic enrollment and then obviously adjust if we have increase or decrease in enrollment for IB programs or AP programs.
Okay. I was just thinking because a college board each year makes AP exams much more like expensive. So I was kind of shocked that there was no like increase in the budget like to compensate for those prospective increases.
I mean, it's a significant amount of money, but you know, if it's a, you know, a couple percent increase, it's something again, we have to pick up as we make adjustments throughout the year to the budget. So.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Thank you, Eric.
Hey, I'd like to make a comment and then we'll go directly to Mr. Bickford, whose hand I see. Going back to the slide of what's not in the budget. It's of great concern to me that we had additional EL teachers in last year's budget. We had additional counselors and social workers in last year's budget and we were not able to fund those positions. I think it's fair to say that given this pandemic, that the needs of those students who needed those teachers this year will need them even more because those needs have been exacerbated. Would that be a fair statement, Dr. Michael? Those people are no less needed now than they were this year?
Right. I'd be concerned that the gaps for our EL students, I remember that was one of the groups we brought back in stage two and stage three. And I heard amazing stories about the progress we were making with those children. I fear that they are the ones that are greatest risk right now when we're back out on full virtual instruction, even though the EL staff has continued to work very hard and are making great contacts with those kids. Our overall EL enrollment this year was slightly down. So it wasn't as high as it was last year, but I think that's a result of children not being enrolled in school. So parents are a little bit skeptical of virtual learning or inviting the outside world into their home or whatever. So we believe our EL population is actually up. It's just not enrolled right now. So I think the gap will increase. I think the number of students will increase for the fall. And I think obviously the need for additional supports will increase. So I would see that all part of that academic recovery from the pandemic as part of what we need to do.
So they'll be prioritized with regard to that recovery effort?
I think as we do our assessments of students and identify our gaps, I think there are going to be a, a very glaring gap that we need to work with those students.
Thank you. Mr. Bickford?
Yeah, my final line I want to tackle, technology support and maintenance. It's page three or four of the summary with the equipment going down 850,000, supplies and materials going up 630. Can you just take us through those lines? I'm looking on page 27. Obviously last year we spent about $950,000 or was it budgeted to spend that? This year we're budgeting 100,000. So is that just a decision we're making not to?
Well, I'm going to let staff probably go through it, but part of the adjustments you're going to see throughout the budget. Gentlemen, help me here. You know, we identified anything under $1,000 as a material regardless whether it looked like a piece of equipment. And now we've adjusted that number. So some things that were used to be called equipment, we've transferred now over into instructional materials. And you're going to see that transfer throughout the budget, various lines. You'll see a lot of things from equipment move, if we get it the right way. Equipment moved into instructional materials because of the change in the value, something there. Help me guys.
The, the capitalization limit that we put in our fixed asset system went from 1,000 to $5,000. So yes, that's a, that's a change because now we want to code those items that cost less than 5,000 individually as supplies. And to be consistent with our, our past practice when, when the limit was 1,000. So.
Eric, to get through with Mr. Bickford's question, he kind of was looking at that block of, of numbers there together. Anything you can help me with there?
A lot of it was small equipment. So it really, it's just, it's net zeroed out. It's just, we're, we're spending the same amount. We're just categorizing our purchases differently.
That, that is what's correct.
Got it.
And, and one of, one of the changes, most of it is definitely a move from equipment to supplies and materials. Definitely the 850 you have, went down in equipment on line 38 of the page, the last line on page three. Line 36, two lines up was an increase in supplies and materials of 630. We also took a little, an opportunity here to add 40,000 to communications and 15,000 to summer employment and some, and 165 to contract tech repairs and maintenance places where we needed to, for lack of a better term, right-size the budget to actual expenditures. So there likely will be a small decrease in purchased equipment, which is now an, an instructional supply so that we could make the budget right in other places.
As you can see, in the same overruns in the same line items, we tried without adding money to the budget within the department as much as possible, shift the money around to get it in the right places based again on past experience of things.
If I could just add, the, the biggest bulk of that is the small computer equipment. Are those the, are those tablets, Chromebooks, those kind of purchases?
Yeah.
It could, it could also be things like projectors and things that have to be replaced.
Air hives.
The boards, the air hives.
By access spots. Actually, the, the student devices are in another section of the budget. They're not in the technology line item. They're under classroom instruction. Is that correct, David, Eric?
Yes, that's correct on page nine probably, eight or nine. And we've replaced iPads, we've bought Chromebooks and we've replaced, we're replacing teacher MacBooks with the federal coronavirus relief money that we received this year.
So part of our budget strategy now over the next several years to Mr. Bickford's point, where he's pointed out those lines, as much as possible, we're going to update our routers, switches, switches, air hives, which is our connection device in each of the classrooms. We're going to try to do that over the next number of years so that when we hit the year that we're going to have to replace all these things that we just purchased with federal money, that we have the resources to do that. And we're going to have to spread that out across three or four years. We're not going to be able to replace everything we bought new this year from federal money all in one year unless there's an increase of the budget. So we're going to have to be planning long-term, five, six, seven years out, a phase in approach of how we replace the Chromebooks, how we replace the new iPads. The other thing we've expanded is pre-K through two with the one-to-one devices, pre-K through two. We've never been budgeted to do that. So we picked up those costs with, you know, with the federal money to make this work for right now. But long-term, we've never been budgeted for that. Now, will technology come down in cost? Then maybe we continue to budget that without a substantial increase. Will it increase? Will it change? What will happen, you know, over that next period of years? It's definitely, you know, we created a little bit of a replacement monster that we're gonna have to keep an eye on here out in the future.
We also replaced quite a few servers, I think in the last year or two. We replaced servers that run the security cameras at schools for the higher definition video, videos and so forth. So that's a big ticket item when they have to replace servers, that can, that can add up in a hurry.
And that's gonna tend to hit just about the same time, I think, that a lot of these devices need to be taken care of, so.
Understood. All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gassford, followed by Mr. Bakum.
Okay, this is gonna be my last question. I think I've got everything here. But I know last year we hadn't anticipated mothballing Funkstown Elementary School. And we, we did put that school into service, I think, for that daycare program to help with this. And I'm not sure where we stand on that. And also, if we would have to anticipate mothballing another school in, in the near future, would, where would, where would we find that information? And have we thought about the budget cost for those two issues?
So the mothballing of Funkstown, we did pick up a month or two that we did have it rented to a childcare center. The need kind of went away at the point particularly that teachers now, you know, don't have their children in daycare because many of them are home if they have daycare issues. So they were not be able, they could not sustain that program. So, you know, they, they had an out clause, they paid their final bill and were out of there pretty quickly, Mr. Prue. I can't remember, six, eight weeks they might have been there. The cost savings we did realize with custodian, principal, clerical worker, you know, ongoing maintenance of the building or, you know, maintained that operable heat and cooling. We still run minimum heat and cooling in the building. We still have our cameras up, you know, those types of things. But we did net that savings on last year's budget. And I'm not aware of any substantial increase in costs that we had to absorb as a result of the daycare. Ms. Prue, anything?
That, that building really, the utility cost on that building was minimal as it was even as we realized some of that savings last year. I think it's approximately 35,000 for utility costs for the entire year in the previous year on full operation. So that, that was minimal.
I think, you know, as we look on ahead, if things get desperate, you know, we might have to look at some other opportunities where we do something similar to Funkstown. Those would be very painful decisions, but we do have, continue to have declining enrollment in all of our outlined schools for the most part. Maybe the exception of Boonsboro, you know, they have those nine NX properties, but even their enrollment is declining at the elementary level. Pick up, check up enrollment. But all of our outlined areas, Clear Spring continues to plummet, Hancock is plummeting, Smithburg continues to decline. So there is concern here of, you know, what might be for the future, especially if we need to tighten up even more. And availability of offering academic material to children. Sometimes you can be too small. Just like you can be too big, you can be too small to really, to really do a good job. Think Mr. Bakum might have a question?
Yes, Mr. Bakum.
Thank you. So when, so I'm on page 11, line 16. And you can see in FY 2018, there's like a substantial amount then on textbooks over $100,000. And then compared over the, the next four years, it's been like around $30,000. So those textbooks that were bought in FY 2018, they're gonna need replaced. And so is there a projection like later down the road for how those textbooks will be replaced and modernized so students can best use them?
Give me one more time what page you're on, Mr. Bakum. I'm sorry.
Page 11, line 16.
This is the career and technology programs.
Yeah, this is, this is only CTE programs, so.
Yes.
You know, this isn't all textbooks across the entire system. We've actually struggled. A lot of the textbook companies have gone out of business or now have completely online materials. And we do a lot of open source materials instead of textbooks. We're actually looking for a textbook for some of our elementary curriculum. But this line in particular is related solely to career and technology education. And they can move money within these categories if they have the need. But based on the projection for textbooks, normally, they normally only need about $30,000 for those textbook replacements. I think what will happen, even some of those were bought in hard copy a number of years ago. We'll probably change to electronic copies or maybe textbook won't be necessary. So I know that doesn't exactly answer your question, but I don't think I have more information off the top of my head that I can specifically answer.
I might add one thing. We have 150,000 budgeted in the tutoring grant, which is coronavirus relief fund grant that we have to spend by the end of this month. We had 150,000 budgeted for CTE textbooks and instructional materials. So I'm sure that's being spent and we're reviewing those grants and, and everything has to be submitted early in January for that.
So maybe we're picking up some of those long-term costs there.
I believe so because there was no non-supplanted.
Right.
And in a larger scale on page eight, I believe it's lines 57 and 58 are what I'll call general education textbooks for elementary and secondary budgeted annually at $515,000.
Thank you. I also just like to make a follow-up comment to the textbooks. So I know like as we modernize more and more, much, many more textbooks are becoming online and that's amazing. But I do know a lot of students have difficulty or they don't want that additional eye strain. So it is important to get physical textbooks for those students.
Yeah, I think with most of our purchases of textbooks, when there is a physical copy of the book, we do try to get a classroom set of the book. So a teacher that might be teaching three or four or five sections would have one classroom set because the textbook companies oddly enough still charges for the online book almost as much as it costs for the book physically to have the book in hard copy. So we don't do a double cost of the book and the online version, but we do generally buy at least a classroom set so that there is a hard physical copy of the book in the classroom that a student could use or can be lent out to a student if they had some issues with the electronic version.
Thank you, Dr. Michael, for the question.
Anyone else have a question?
I mean, we certainly can come back to this and have another work session. Obviously, a lot's gonna happen. We're hoping to know more about our revenue from the governor. Ms. Prue, I think ideally January 18th, maybe a couple of days later than that to hear something out of MSDE. Then obviously it's gotta go through the whole legislative process that could change things. That low effort adjustment, again, we anticipate hearing about that next week if things goes they have in the past. So that'll take care of another unknown. Hopefully as we work with our county commissioners that they can see a great need for us to help, help us to recover from this pandemic. We're obviously willing to work out with how things could be funded. There are many things that we need to fund going forward that could be funded, maybe outside of means of effort, particularly maintenance, things that we do internally for a couple of years or the nurses or some of the other programs. We just have to watch program shifts and things that we can't control. So more to come right after the new year. I'd be glad to share more information as it becomes available.
Thank you, Mr. Gassford. You had your hand up and now it's down. Did you want to say something? Okay, anyone else before we end our work session? No? Well, thank you, Mr. Prue. Thank you, Mr. Brandenburg. Thank you, Mr. Sisler. Dr. Michael, thank you for your presentation of draft budget. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Kevin. And I'll see you all in our work session or in our closed session coming up, 3:30.